Seven o'clock on Thursday, October 8th. We, this is the regular city council meeting at Albernate City Hall. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you please rise, we have our flag on the screen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. What, will you call a roll for us, please?
Counselor Menzen.
Present.
Counselor Schatz.
Present.
Counselor Serra.
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg.
Present.
Counselor Trump.
Present.
We do have a forum to conduct business tonight. So next, I will seek an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Schatz.
Second.
Seconded by Menzen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. They're approved. We have the Sheriff's report in hand, so we'll head and look over that. For September of the required forty-three hours, they put in a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twelve point one hours. If there are any concerns, we can let the clerk know and we can get ahold of the Superior Officer. So Danielle, I do want to report with some of the change in traffic and how the school is handling pickup and drop-off. I have seen some parking issues on the side streets. So maybe we could have them kind of out and about, anything around in front or behind the school. Folks seem to think that our signs don't mean anything when they're only going to be there for five or ten minutes, so. If you could please let them know that, I'd much appreciate it.
Is that pickup and drop-off?
Mostly pickup in the afternoon. Thank you, so like the three fifteen-ish. Anything else, anybody sees in the Sheriff's report or anything else on that one? Perfect, we appreciate them. Next is the Mayor's report. I don't have anything, so I'm going to skip over that. Council reports, start to my left. Menzen.
Oh, nothing.
Mr. Schatz. Mr. Bozenberg.
Nope, nothing.
Mr. Trump.
I want to thank the Fire Department. I got to see them in action about ten days ago. They came in on a pretty serious situation. They stabilized a patient and got her into hosp- into the ambulance and she's home recuperating now. Even if you buck your head.
We always appreciate you guys. Alright, that brings us to item number eight, which is citizen comments. So we have two types of comments in the city of Albernate. We have those related to agenda items. So if there's something on the agenda that you would like to make a comment on, we'll get to it. Now would be the time and then we'll move to non-agenda items. Please state your name and address and you will have five minutes. So are there any comments, citizen comments on agenda-related items? Okay, hearing none, we will move to non-agenda-related items. Hello.
Hi, Dart Road, 212 Roosevelt. The storm damage on our house has hit pretty bad. We weren't covered nearly as good as we thought we were. In insurance lines, we did give a small amount of money, but it's nowhere near enough to repair it. They did not deem it as full total loss. They deemed it as repairable. And that was with a structural engineer came in and from the top to bottom. So with that said, we are in the dilemma of what to do with it. The money they gave us wasn't enough to buy another place, so we're having to do a rental at the moment. We understand it's quite an eyesore. We also understand it brings other people's property value down. And we are weighing some different options. And that's why we're here tonight, to find out what the city thought of a few of these different options. We were thinking of demoing it completely to the ground and at that point, maybe seeking a mortgage to rebuild a stick home. And when we called about that, we were advised of, what was the name of that thing, what did she tell us?
The lot isn't big enough, so we would need a...
We would need a personal understanding.
Variance.
Variance. And in all honesty, that's what we would like to, we would like to remain a resident of Albernate. So we were more curious as to, is this something that's typical to give? Is this something that is going to be a major legal fiasco where I just can't afford it? You know, I, I'm trying to see if it's within our realm of possibilities.
Sure. So I'll just-
I do have other ones after that, if I have time, but.
Nope, you bet. Let me jump in because you said that's your preferred. So I'm aware of the situation and I talked to both Guy and Danielle and I will seek from counsel as well. As far as I'm concerned, so what he's referencing is, according to our zoning ordinance, a lot has to be a certain width. It has to be eighty feet and he does, he does not meet that eighty feet. However, this is not a new lot. So in my opinion, you would be grandfathered into that ordinance and would not require a variance. But that's something we could discuss. On the same token, getting a variance just means you would go in front of our Board of Adjustments. They would weigh all of their, the variables in hand and just say yes or no whether they would allow that variance and then they bring that decision back to counsel.
Okay.
Generally, that comes down to, can it be avoided? I mean, in this case, there, it's, it's not as though you recently split the ground and it's, you, you made it smaller. This has just always been what the lot is. We've had another example where, you know, maybe someone wanted to put a shed too close to the property line, whereas they could move it over, they just prefer to have it here. That may not get a variance type of thing. So I'm not making any promises, but that's kind of how that process works. So nothing necessarily legal unless you didn't agree with their decision and needed to take it further. But in my opinion, we have many, many lots in town that are not the current required width, that I wouldn't expect those to need a variance. With that said, what you will have to look at, and again, I'll open this up to counsel as well. In designing the new house, you will have to adhere to things like there are certain setback requirements. So you have to be twenty-five feet from the front of the property, five feet on the sides or seven, it's all in there. And then things like height requirements. If you were to go a two-story, it can only be so tall. With it being a new structure, you would have to adhere to those. So if that helps at all, Counselors, do you have any?
That totally helps, yeah.
Counselors, do you have any comments?
I'll throw in just real quick, the corner lot works against you. You have, you have a twenty-five foot setback on, on both street sides. So where a, a house in the middle of the block, it's seven on each side and twenty-five on the front, so I mean.
I don't think you're going to get twenty-five.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to do it.
Because I don't think you are now.
We're not, no.
Yeah, you're not.
We're, we're maybe six or ten at most.
Yeah, it was.
So the current house is grandfathered in, but by taking that down, you would have to meet those requirements.
Which will be in the neighbors' heart.
Yeah.
Twenty-five feet, I mean.
Yeah, twenty-five foot is, it'd be really narrow, I would.
Again, you could ask for-
And we would want it to.
Could they ask for a variance?
You could ask for a variance on that setback. It's same, same situation.
Same process on a setback, they could look at the situation. And again, that can be done before you make a decision.
Alright, that's what, we were here to, to get some ideas from everybody. And again, this would be a new home. This would be something that would raise the property values. This would, you know, this would not be, you know, this two-hundred-year-old house is, is falling apart. So I mean, I think if you worked with us and, and helped us, you know, get where we needed to be, it would improve Albernate versus.
I hate this as a corner lot. I don't think you're going to have a problem with the neighbor if you're closer because I don't think the street's going to complain too much.
Brad, did you have something else?
No, no, I didn't.
I had one other question. In our worst-case scenario, we have highly considered either donating it to the city and let them do what they want with it, you know, tear it down, make it a park, whatever. Or donating it to the school. I know that one lot up there was a house at one point, donated to the school and made a parking lot out of it. In, in that effect, is that something that the city would, would be interested? I, I know you can't answer to the school, but would that be something, you know, that? Because either way, something has to be done with it, I mean.
I think if it came to that, you'd be better off to sell the lot.
Well, that's just it, is I sell it and someone else has got to deal with a variance. And I gotta, you know, then I gotta pay whatever cost to demo it out and I don't have that kind of cash just in the bank and I'm not going to be able to get a loan for something that isn't there. So in that, like that worst-case scenario, I would have to give it with some, give it to someone for free for them to be able to do something positive with it. Because I got neighbors that I really respect and I care about and they have homes that their property values are going, just because it's a pile of crap sitting on the corner. Sorry, I didn't mean, I apologize, but I don't want my neighbors to have to deal with that. I wouldn't want them to deal with that. So in a worst-case scenario, that's, you know, I was just curious if, if that's an option through the city.
I will say there are programs available to cities to help rehabilitate nuisance-type properties. So it, it definitely, something needs to happen with it, I'm afraid. Especially this winter, it's going to start collecting the critters that are looking to get in from the outside.
Well, you gotta work like that, they got no roof. They're not going to be very warm.
So, yeah. We have, again, we would have resources if that's something that came to counsel as far as getting it cleaned up. However, this is, it's ultimately your decision. We can help, the city clerk can help facilitate what you would need to take to the Board of Adjustments if that was a direction that you needed to go. Also to Counselor Menzen's point, even to sell it as-is, there are plenty of contractors that are used to working with variances and things like that, so you may have luck that direction too. So I think you've definitely got options and it's just.
Oh, yeah, we, I know we were, from where we want to be to worst-case scenario, there's a lot of things in between. I just wanted to address the two because those were the two I really had questions on. The other ones, you know, you sell it for what you get, that type of deal and those things. But I'm just saying, in, in that worst-case scenario, I mean, I, I work in the tow business, okay? And if someone abandons a car, the property owner's got to do something with it. So, you know, it gets towed in and it gets, you know, reclaimed and disvowed. There's a whole bunch of paperwork, a whole bunch of mess and it's a pain to run. But if someone voluntarily says, here's a title to it, you can do whatever you need to do with it and get it gone. And that's the approach we would want to take. We would want to make sure it didn't cost the city any more than it would and everything was easy-peasy and everybody was happy at the end of the day because we don't want to be thought of as that family.
We appreciate that. So there are processes in place to help facilitate if that's the direction we go. I think it's called a quitclaim deed and, yeah, there are all sorts of processes to help through that.
And the property is free and clear of debt as well. There's no lien, it's the property that has it now.
So again, if you want to start with the Board of Adjustments, we can help get that set up, find out what they need in order to start having that meeting, but.
I would rather see you go with that procedure.
That means, well, I mean, we would like to put a new home there, actually.
And you can do all that now, I mean, before you make any financial decisions, you know, talk to the board and make sure that's all in line before you put on that road.
What, what, we, we just spoke to the bank today and we was talking with them. Their credit's great, so we got a really good chance to get a mortgage, but he wanted us to come see you guys first. So I'd like to get financing straightened out and make sure that that does go before I waste board's time, this time, that person's time. He just said, go to a meeting, see what they have to say. And we've been with that bank for about fifteen years, so they know who we are and what we're about. And if they don't grant it to us, it is what it is. You know, Lord gives, he takes away. So I just, I, I don't mean to waste any more time. We just wanted to get some, some quick answers to what the thoughts were of the city. I know it looks bad and I just, I hate it that they're important. She's got to look at it every day, you know. Across the street, you know, Steve and them guys, I mean, they got a beautiful home and set in, you know, inside what looks like a crack house and, you know, I feel so bad for them, but, but, you know, we want to get it straightened out. I know we want you to know that we want it straightened out, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And I don't think any option is off the table at this point. And if you do have more questions, they're here as a resource and they know how to get ahold of us as well. We definitely appreciate you coming tonight.
We appreciate it.
Is that?
No, I'm just thanking you for coming.
Oh, absolutely, thank you for asking us.
Did you have any other questions? Do you feel pretty good about next steps and?
I think we'll go ahead and exit. Once you guys finish your thing, we got kids feet, so.
Go ahead and meet with the Board of Adjustments when you ever can.
Okay. We appreciate it, thank you so much, guys.
They love for it, they, they love meetings.
They need to be put to work once in a while.
Take care, guys, thanks again for all the help.
Any other non-agenda-related? Alright, that, we move on to writ reports. These are in your packet. We'll start with Chief Graham.
I've got nothing yet. I'm boring over there.
Don't say that.
Way to fix yourself.
We do have an invoice here, is that something you need approval on? Is it within normal operating?
I, Andrew stepped in the other day and said that they have bought some of those AD.
AD pens?
AD pens. And I just don't remember it being discussed previously, so.
It was a while ago we ordered them.
I, I remember a conversation, but I don't remember if we actually put the approval on it. That's, I absolutely cannot remember, so.
Well, they're for, we're not, we need them. We used them on somebody.
Right.
We have to replace them.
Well, and expire, so.
And they do expire, but we have to have them like keep functioning. It's not a choice.
They weren't still sticky, you didn't check them? Make sure they were still sticky.
I didn't, I didn't peel them back off.
Will we feel better if we got approval on that?
Probably better, because.
Any other questions for Steve before we do that?
Andrew was also asking about getting ahold of you about doing some cars.
Cars, yeah, but that's no big deal. Yeah, I told him.
Okay.
I was doing that conversation with Danielle today. Was it today?
Yes.
Yesterday, yesterday. And when, what's the expiration date on the new ones? Like four years, three years?
A D, I think they're, A D, I think they're five years.
I, I don't know.
Maybe suggest maybe we put it on the calendar or something and it'll come up, so it comes up, we don't, they don't go outdated, or?
Oh, they don't, we check them every month.
Oh, okay.
When trucks get checked, they get checked.
Yeah, because they have to check the batteries too.
Yeah.
Cool, alright, well with that, I would seek a motion to approve the invoice for $720.60 for A D pens.
So moved.
Moved by Trump.
Second.
Seconded by Schatz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
September eight, October 18th, we're going to do a car exchange thing at the shop. And Lifeguard will come in, we're going to train with them at some point in the month, just so everybody knows. I see Lifeguard coming in and freaking out. It's a Sunday, like at two o'clock. We don't know when we're going to land them yet, but somewhere in town.
I like having them know where in town they can land, so. Alright, next is Public Works. I'll recognize Mr. Trump.
One thing I want to add is, I just got a call yesterday from Altorfer Cad who does our generator maintenance. They just completed it and it's the third year of the contract. So the contract's up. He sent me a renewal, but I don't think we checked them last time. So I'd like to get a couple quotes from, from other, they've done us great, a great job, but I still think we probably ought to freshen up the quotes and we got plenty of time to sign a new contract, you know. So I'll probably, hopefully have some quotes for next, next month to look at, so. And the generators performed great, by the way, during the storm and they did very well. The big generator at the shop did fail to start on its next routine startup after it ran that long. It did run a little bit, just right below the sensor on the coolant, probably from running ten days straight without stopping, so. But otherwise, they worked fine, so.
Any questions? Thank you. And city clerk.
I added a budget workshop. I wonder if it was two-sided. I don't remember. Anyway, this came in the mail and I'm going to go to one of the workshops. I'm not going to go to the workshop, I'm sorry. I'm going to virtually go to the workshop. And I just thought I'd let you guys all know in case you had any interest in attending, especially since they, they are virtual. It's $25 a person to attend, so if you are interested in getting more information on the budget, I'm going to do it, so will me too, but if you're interested, that's my free. And then also, ECI COG came and met with us a couple weeks ago and we talked to them about facilitating some grant processes. They need to know what our needs are and then they'll be able to help us find grants that meet those needs and then they can help us write the grants. They do charge a fee, but it's, the fee that they charge is based upon the size of the city, so that's relative. And then we, they also talked about doing a capital improvement plan. So they just sent me the proposal today, today or yesterday. So I put a copy of that in the packet. They're trying to start doing CIP, Capital Improvement Plans for Cities. And so they offered to do this for us at no cost other than the travel mileage to come here and work with us. So kind of as a pilot program. So it would be good for us to get that in place and kind of be looking ahead at what we want to do as, you know, as what they want to do as counsel for the city, so we can get an idea of those needs for the grant purposes, so. Just kind of wanted to let you guys know that and give you a copy of that proposal. They wanted to start that in November, so just kind of be thinking and.
What would you need from this group? Do you need participation in like a subcommittee? Do you need written submissions? Or do we not know the answer to that question?
I presently don't have the answer to that question.
Information is really fresh.
Yes, I will, yes, I'll find out and I'll email you guys and let you know. That's a really good question. And I should know, I will find out, thank you.
Do you need any kind of approval to move forward with that, with them? I mean, my take on it is, they don't run pilots forever and if we're going to get it for free-ish.
And they have staff that have done them before. They just haven't offered them as ECI COG, so it, it's, that's why they're, they have staff capable of doing it, but they haven't done it as an organization. So they happened to talk to us and said that we, they'd like to start with us.
So it, it says in here that they'll charge us $100 total for the travel expense due upon the completion of the project. And it said that they will facilitate a session with the council to determine priorities. So they've got kind of a tentative timeline in here, so I think we're okay. I'll just keep touching base with you guys and we'll make sure that those timelines meet. I'm guessing that November 12th is our council meeting for November, so I think they were just going to come to a council meeting and start the process, so. As long as you guys are okay with moving forward with it and, I mean, it's $100 to me, it's.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm just hoping you guys would be interested and want to jump on board and do that, so. If anybody's like, you know, not interested, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll tell them that you guys want to move forward.
Okay, carry on. Anything for Danielle? Perfect, so next I need approval of the consent agenda.
I do have one bill that was added.
Did you add anything to the consent agenda?
See, I had one bill for Keystone for $12.50.
Chester, do we have your funds?
Yes, I'm already approved.
Okay, it's been approved. Alright, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda with an addition of a bill from Keystone for $12.50. Moved by Bozenberg. Seconded by Menzen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Alright, new business. So we are into trick-or-treating. We briefly discussed this at the last meeting. We touched upon it. So Halloween does fall on a Saturday this year. Communities around us have taken several different approaches. Anything from canceling, although I don't know how you stop people from walking outside, but anything from canceling to issuing guidance to just somewhat staying quiet on it. So I guess it's open to counsel as far as what direction they would like to go. Danielle did include, I sent over some verbiage that I had seen and really liked. I did get feedback from one of the council members we have in there to consider wearing a mask and just striking that and just say, wear a mask. Just take out the iffy in there. Again, we're not going to be trolling, but it just kind of solidifies that guidance a little bit. So that's above the residence column there. So if you're coming within six feet of others, to wear a face mask.
Okay.
Just kind of simplify that language a little bit. So open for discussion.
I think people are going to do whatever they want anyway. So let's just set a timeline we do every year and move on.
If you want to wear a mask when you hand out candy, fine. If you don't, fine.
If you don't want to get close to them, don't turn your light on.
Yep, you don't want, yeah, you don't want to participate, don't participate. It's fine, you know, people do it every year.
What are normal hours? Five to seven or seven-thirty, something like that?
We usually do five to seven, but that's when it falls on a weeknight. Do we go four to six? Do we keep it at five? Two hours is definitely enough.
I think five to seven, especially on a Saturday, that's up. We always do that anyway.
That works for me.
I would seek a motion to approve trick-or-treating time from five to seven PM on Saturday, October 31st. Moved by Menzen, seconded by Bozenberg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay. Motion carries. With the one change to that. Okay, and I do know that they will be, there will be eyes on Facebook, so let's make sure we get that posted so that people know that. That can be a tomorrow morning thing.
Where does this get posted, this brochure or this?
I was going to put it on Facebook and the Nextdoor app and then probably put it up at Lefty's and the post office and up here at City Hall. Was the verbiage, everything else is okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anywhere else that you want me to post it?
Just one.
Alright, next item is the Outer Creek Township 208E agreement. So there was a small committee of us that met to look at the language, look at what we've heard from them. We worked with the trustees, just to make sure that everything's in order. There was some confusion and I think a lot of that fell to how vague our previous agreement was. So we just made sure to be very pointed and clear on referencing the Iowa code sections and how money will be transferred. So one of the big changes, um, is that we are gonna go through the county treasurer, um, and county auditor office. So as they collect the property taxes, they will send them to the city, so that we don't have... So we don't have to worry about that, how that changes hands, or whose responsibility it is, how often it comes in, those types of things. Plus they have the systems and the personnel and the backups to be able to do that for us, so, um, pretty excited about that. And then we did also, I wanna highlight, we built in, uh, reporting in meetings. It was in the previous agreement, but not really something that was done. Uh, we have mentioned that that should be at least annually, 'cause we saw a lot of value in meeting with the trustees, and just making sure everyone understands the health of the, of the department, and, you know, what big projects we have, which right now is the station, but going forward, you know, we're gonna start looking at equipment and those types of things, and then everybody's just on the same page, so. With this being a new agreement, we would need council approval, I believe, to move forward on our side, and then the trustees will take it to their meeting and do the same, so.
Well, they were supposed to be here tonight.
They left you high in the room. We're glad you're here.
She moved it.
So moved.
Oh, I think, okay, we'll give it to Chester, so Chester has moved to approve the new 208E for the Outer Creek fire protection. So I have a second from Trump, any other discussion? Alright, Aldo, do you wanna roll call, or are we good with...
I'll make it, please.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Okay, I'll leave it then.
Easy, easy. Thanks for coming out, I'm bored this night. Last time we tried to do this, it was snowy and icy, so thank you.
How long you gonna say that?
Alright, let's finish up, we got some old business here. First item is the Freedom Rock, so we did approve in the last meeting, going with a thousand dollar donation. Um, the reason this is back in here is just so we can get a look at and approve what is written on the stone. So the third page of that has the recommendation.
Put a blank one in there in case you guys were, you know, wanting to try some of the things.
I like the one that's here.
I didn't know if anybody had any other ideas or thoughts for the verbiage, so.
My only feedback, and it's kind of nitpicky, can we not make served past tense? Can it be in honor of all who served?
Yes.
And then...
Move it over.
Move it over one.
Yep.
It makes sense, good idea.
See, this is why I have...
That was all, otherwise I really like it. Is there any other feedback? Alright, there we go.
Thank you.
Water sewer rates, who's talking about this one?
Who does? Wait, you wanna know about this one?
Oh, okay. You, real quick.
Alright.
Walk us through it.
Okay, so, we've talked about this off and on for a while now, the need to change rates. I think the last time we did a rate increase was 2012.
No, that was not a while ago, fifteen probably.
I digress, just kidding. It was a while ago. Um, not 2012 though. Um, so, we have this spreadsheet that you plug in, uh, information, it looks like this, the rate checkup. So there's a few of those in here for our current rates. And so, let's see, there's one for water, there's one for sewer, and then there's one for stormwater. Now, our stormwater's just a flat rate monthly, that's the two dollars and fifty cents. So basically, what this spreadsheet does is it takes your number of customers on an annual basis, the number of billing cycles, the minimum number of gallons, then it calculates what you should need to meet your expenses. You put in your, um, total expenses for the last school year, and then it, it is supposed to calculate what you would need, or if you have a budget, or a deficit, or a surplus or a deficit in your funding. So if you can look at the first one there, um, that has the minimum rate of the thirty-eight, thirty-eight, and the three seventy-nine, that's our, that's our current water rates. Um, as you can see, with the expenses that we had last year, last fiscal year, then a hundred and ninety-six thousand, that, at that rate, it would essentially leave us a, a deficit of about twenty-eight thousand. So we currently don't meet the need to cover our expenses. And then I also pulled our expenses the last fiscal year, um, and put them down by each different depart, or category. So you could see, um, for water, I mean, part of the reason why it's so high is we have the SRF loan payment coming out every year, which is forty-four thousand, um, and then the interest for that is seventeen, so that's a big part of it, a big chunk of it. We also have, um, our wages are allocated to water and sewer. In talking with Connie from Walker, she was helping me look at this analysis. The way that we split the clerks' wages is we do, um, a third to the general fund to clerk, a third to water, and a third to sewer, and she said that they do theirs a little bit differently, and they don't allocate as much to water and sewer. I think they do forty to the general fund of the clerk portion, and then, um, it would be twenty and twenty to water and sewer. So if we wanted to look at adjusting that in the next fiscal year's budget, and reallocating in the way that that, um, those wages are divided up, that would alleviate a little bit of that expense that's going to water and sewer. And we can look at what that would, uh, what that adjustment would do to the numbers. Uh, but as you can see, last fiscal year, the total expenses for water were a hundred and ninety-six, and then below, you can see, the revenues were only a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we have, we did have a deficit. And then the same thing with this, or I mean sewer, we, we did have a little bit of, um, of revenue there. And then storm sewer, we were, we were over as well.
But we're supposed to maintain twenty percent.
Well, I, I don't believe so. We are supposed to have ten percent over where we're at, um, because of that SRF loan. So in the water fund, we're supposed to have ten percent over our reven, over what we make, to cover that as a reserve. And we're clearly in a deficit position, so we don't, we're not doing that. But yes, um, ten percent, I believe, is, we're supposed to have over, and that's only in the water, 'cause of the loan payment. So I just went through that spreadsheet and...
Does your insurance come out of those as well, or just your wages?
Uh, it's, insurance comes out as well, we've got wages.
But is that yours, or is that just guys?
It's all, it's both. And it's, I think it's same thing, it's allocated based upon a percentage, and I can get that information, I just didn't have time to pull all the details, but I can definitely figure out what that would look like. And workers' comp is coming out of it too, so definitely looking at how that's allocated, we could adjust some of it. So then, I took that same spreadsheet and did an increase to get it to a place where it wasn't a deficit. With the water, it was a twenty percent increase to get a five thousand dollar surplus, which isn't even the ten percent, but that was a pretty high increase, so I just plugged in that number, so I increased the water rates by twenty percent. And then the sewer was already above the expenses, so I increased that by ten percent, just to show you guys what it would look like at those numbers. And then I added a dollar to the stormwater rate, um, to get a little bit of reserve for that as well. And then the last two pages, I'm sorry, this is a lot of information. The last two pages are what an average bill would look like at our current rate, and then if we went to an increase just based upon those numbers that I used, the twenty percent increase on the water and the ten percent on sewer, and then the one dollar increase on the stormwater, what that same bill would look like at the same amount of consumption, if that makes sense. So there's two columns, there's the current, and then I have each, each consumption amount at the current rate, and then at an increased rate, so. I know it's a lot of information, a lot to take in, and you probably have lots of questions, so I'll just let you sit on that.
You've done a nice job explaining it.
We're gonna say, thank you, this is what you've been asking for.
You know, I think, I thought the only thing you really have a question about is allocating your wages, but we've gotta do something to cover our expenses, and, you know, what you've done is good, basic, that's, you know, good, basic work here.
Well, I, I mean, in looking at the rates, the water rate is clearly not meeting the expenses, and so, but it's a pretty high jump. So I know nobody wants to raise rates, but I thought it'd be a good way to look at it and start discussing.
One of the things we learned at the training I was just at too, is this infrastructure keeps getting older and older. You know, um, the water tower painting was a, a prime example, five valves would not shut. We had to put one in, which is gonna replace two of those, but we really need to go after three more valves that wouldn't close, that are near that water tower, and not just to isolate the water tower, but to be able to isolate in case of a main break in that neighborhood, you know, and that's, those three valves, that's probably gonna be a fifteen thousand dollar repair, to put in those three, even though it's all in the same hole, so. We just can't count on a year without main breaks, or without things like that coming up, is what I'm trying to say. We gotta continue to budget for that kind of repair, um, 'cause every year it's a little bit older.
Our SRF loans, how many years do those continue out?
I can find out.
I mean, it's more than four or five.
Yeah, it's, it's got a ways left.
That's good enough.
And also, we talked about maybe incremental increases, I mean, I think we would have to make a substantial jump to get back in the black, but then we would have to consider, is there a additional increase with every year, or every second year past that, knowing again, just what we discussed, it's gonna continue to, expenses will continue to increase.
And again, so when Connie was here, talking to me about this, what they did was they did implement an incremental increase after they had to jump theirs, when they did a new system. Um, and so what they do is every year they review it, and this last year, they decided that they had enough in their reserves, so they didn't need to do the incremental increase, so they just put it on hold for a year, and then they would, uh, review it the next year, and kind of see where they're at. So, um, in pulling some of these reports, I was looking at, um, how this deficit is functionally processed in our system, and so I was, I, I still need to get a good grasp of it, but it looks like what the system does is when we have this deficit in the water fund, for example, the hundred and ninety-six in expenses, and then the hundred and seventy-five in revenue, at the end of the year, it pulls it from, must pull it from the general fund. I don't know where exactly, how, and how that happens, there's just these end-of-year entries that it does, and so I need to dig into that further, but to me, that was a little bit like, I don't really think, I mean, that's not good, and it's just, the system does that automatically, and so I'm interested to see how that, um, you know, where exactly it pulls it from. But obviously, we don't wanna continue to have that pull from under our funds, because we aren't maintaining enough of the revenues to cover these expenses.
So I appreciate the detail, um, I would like some time to chew on it a little bit, and also, with the year that we've had, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I don't think we should be making any changes before the end of the year. I think it, this needs to wait to 2021, and we've gone this far. Obviously, something needs to be done, um, but I think we can also start finding some right answers during budget season, so we have other opportunities, things like looking at wages or insurance, and where that gets us.
Yeah, I, I'll get those details as well. And this was just me plugging in different numbers, so, I mean, we could look at, you know, we don't have to do a, we could look at increasing the flat rate on the stormwater, or we could look at increasing one more than the other, increasing the, so there's the base rate, the, you know, the thousand dollar base rate, and then anything over that has the, um, the lower per usage rate. Am I even saying that right, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So we could look at increasing one of those more than the other. Anyway, just, again, wanted you guys to have some information to look through and start discussing.
It's clear we need to do something. I'm not happy about going twenty percent, that seems, that seems excessive.
Well, that kind of goes to looking in the future, if we have, if we had big incremental changes.
Right.
You talked about the incremental, uh, changes, what, what percentage was, um, or was that what you were talking about?
Walker. Uh, I don't know, I could ask. Probably a couple of percent.
Yeah, we're talking about two, two and a half percent?
I think maybe two or three percent every, once they got to a point where, 'cause they had to put a new system in, and it was very expensive. There are programs to help cities finance those programs, there's grants and, um, like the SRF option, so, I mean, we'll be able to, we'll be able to pay for it, but then, um, they increased their rates to be able to cover their expenses, and then they implemented that annual increase, so that way they didn't have to go ahead and jump again in the future, if, if they wanted.
I don't wanna get to that point. I mean, I get an increase every year as a cost of living, it makes sense, you know? That's, that's the reason why employers do that, because the expectation is, things like these, the cost goes up.
Yeah.
So.
But without a big project imminent, we could do a, a heavier ramp up to bring it down to a, a smaller. Like, if she's saying it needs to be twenty percent, maybe if you did a five percent increase for four years, and then settled back down into a two, two and a half percent increase, it wouldn't hit like a ton of bricks. The poor people in COG had to build an eight million dollar wastewater treatment facility, their bills would be more than doubled in one year.
And I also wanna mention that, um, sorry, I keep referencing her, but Connie also said that when they did their increase, what happens is that typically, when you do an increase, people will start conserving water, and so you actually don't see that increase for about two to three years, because if you do an incremental increase, they'll conserve water the first year, and then it increases and they'll conserve water the next year, and so it takes a while to, and that's why, I mean...
That's also a positive, I mean...
Right, yeah, yeah, and you, you know, I understand, there are people on fixed incomes, and nobody wants to see people have to pay more, but just wanted to mention that as well. They're paying.
One for your son, I mean, right. That's a good point. Well, I will ask everyone to take this home, take a look at it, Danielle has a few more pieces to get to us, and then we can just keep this conversation going, again, I don't wanna make any changes before the end of the year, anyway, so.
And if you have questions when you're looking through it, or if there's anything else you want me to put together, just call me or email me, and I can get that for you. I'll take a look, I'll just go pull the files.
And what the amortization looks like too, 'cause I know those payments don't always stay the same. Alright, anything else on that? Perfect, fire station update, it's exciting.
It's starting to come together, and it's gonna go really fast. Um, the steel was a problem, we were waiting for steel a lot, but it is, to my knowledge, all here, um, and will be completed early next week, as far as the exterior, uh, coverings. And then the crew can turn around and start putting the liner on the inside, which, um, is exciting too, 'cause then all of the electroconduit is exterior, uh, in nature in the apparatus space, so the electricians, once the liner's in, the electricians can start putting outlets and, and lights and et cetera inside the building. Uh, sheet rock crew maybe was gonna show up this week, but definitely will be here next week, and so the meeting room will get buttoned up. When the steel crew is back and finishes wrapping the openings for the doors, the overhead doors are here, so they will be installed. It's possible that it will be weather tight by the end of next week. And if that's the case, then once sheet rocks hung, HVAC and electric will come back, and plumbers come back, and do their thing, 'cause they are all to the point where they have to have sheet rock. And, um, the paving crew will be back Monday for sure, if not tomorrow. And so, you know, a lot's gonna happen in the next two weeks, a lot, so it's, it's looking pretty good.
Well, you're talking, they talk about the paving crew, are they gonna start doing the, the entire parking lot then?
Yep, yep, they'll start in the back, and work their way around, and, and try and time it so we always have an access, 'cause that's the kicker, you know, seven days worth of wait before you're driving on it, but the nice part will be, if the steel is all on the ex, if the exterior is completely buttoned up, there's no need for those lifts and et cetera to be on the concrete, it's...
Why has it gotta be seven days, tell them to do it charity?
They, they, that concrete crew says they want seven days before there's any real weight on it, which I'd go ten if it was mine, but...
Check the, yeah, check the mix, um, whatever mix they're using on that too, to make sure that's alright. I guess I never even thought of that when this was being engineered, the mix should have been like a C-max.
Yeah, yeah, I can check on it, it's probably, it's in the spec book, I can look it up.
Is it eight inches thick?
Seven.
Seven.
Yep. Yep, so.
Any more changes, so far everything's been good to plan?
No, we moved a few outlets at the request of the firemen, um, just relocated them, and since there was no wire, I, I don't think we're, we're not gonna do a change order for that, that crew did it this afternoon in like two and a half hours. So it wasn't like it was this huge, it probably didn't waste any material, they just took what was there and moved it, so. Um, yeah, since the, the HVAC changed to get the, the, um, ductwork into the bathrooms, and the, um, there was one other that went along with that, anyway. The change orders you've seen, that's been it, and again, not...
The net out the back.
Yeah, right, not anticipating anymore at this point, I mean, you can always run into something, but it, so far, it's looking really good, like it's, should be fine, so. Minor little, uh, grade problem at the front corner of the building, the excavator got wrong, he came back and fixed it, um, and fixed it right. I was afraid he was just gonna take some rock off and call it good, but the, um, Huff's crew was there and made him dig down and remove dirt, put the rock back, um, so that it's right. Yeah, we're getting there, it's getting really close.
Uh, we're getting a game plan going, we're getting stuff ordered for the new station and some stuff.
Jason Huff is still saying he's, he's, that December twenty-third that he originally planned could be. He has every right to come and ask us for more time with the... He has every right to come and ask us for more time with the COVID delays and the, and the duratio delay. But he's still, he's just hoping, he's planning on being done on time anyway, despite those delays, so. Which appears to me, they very well could be, so.
Brian made this beautiful gold shovel, we didn't get to use it, so we'll have to have ribbon cutting. We can use the gold shovel at the ribbon cutting.
You guys get the antenna wire straightened out?
Yeah, 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 that should've got run today too. Yep, so, no problem there. The communication wire out to the apparatus bay got put in today too. All is well. Yep. There should be FEMA money for that, and, and I think it's in our hazard mitigation plan that we need a generator for that well before we even started the fire station. And both of those building, or both of those units would be considered critical infrastructure. And so it should be really pretty easy to get the FEMA grant, we just gotta apply for it, yep. And I, if you read my report, you'll see that Lee Sloan is back working, which is gonna help me a lot, because then I can spend a little more time in here working on that kinda stuff if I've got him to take care of some of the stuff I would have to take care of otherwise, so. So, yeah, looking forward to that too.
Sounds good. That is the end of our agenda, we'll go around one more time, starting on my right this time. Mr. Trump, anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Bozenberg?
Nothing.
Nothing here? Brian?
No.
Clerk? All right, so I will seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mensen, second by Trump. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. We're outta here.